We are assembled and we're just gonna wait on Garrett for a few minutes. I mean, we're not gonna wait on Garrett for a few minutes. We're gonna start this meeting, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And ask that the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood is absent at this time, but is expected shortly. Councilmember Budge?
Yeah.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pulapati?
Here.
Mayor Sander?
Here. And Madam Clerk, would you read the meeting video announcement, please?
Yes. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, September 19th at 9:00 a.m. And Friday, September 20th at 6:00 p.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can also be viewed on demand at youtube.com/MetroCable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right, very good. Uh, our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna ask Vice Mayor Siri Pulapati to lead us in the pledge. And following that, we'll have an invocation. Julie Steinbach, I think I see her sitting there, uh, in the room from United Methodist Church, will give the invocation. So Siri.
Let us pray. God Almighty Father, we are gathered here this evening to make the city of Rancho Cordova a great place to live and play. Guide us in making thoughtful, honorable decisions for the citizens of this community. Help us set the example of what a city should be by our compassion and understanding of our community members. In a world of chaos, let us be the bright light in the storm. We ask you to bless us and support us in this mission. And Lord, please comfort the family and friends of the heroes that were displayed outside last week. Continue to give peace and security to those who risk their lives for us every day. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Siri, thank you Julie, we appreciate it. United Methodist Church is a longstanding, great organization in Rancho Cordova. We appreciate your, uh, your coming to us tonight. Uh, we're moving on to item number five, presentations. And I think, let's see, is April doing our first new employee introduction? Item 5.1?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor Sanders and councilmembers. I'm April Stevenson, management analyst with the Neighborhood Services Division. As you know, the Neighborhood Services Division encompasses code enforcement and animal services. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing to you Sam McCain, who has been hired as the Neighborhood Services Technician in the Animal Services Program. This employment opportunity is funded through a special partnership between our division and UC Davis. We host a program called the Animal Services Assistance Program, or ASAP for short, which is fully funded by grants and donations. The purpose of this program is to assist Rancho Cordova residents that are facing challenging times managing the care of their pets. And we do this without taking resources from our tax dollars. Our common goal is to reduce our, uh, the high population of animals in the shelter and provide education to all who care to learn about the city jurisdiction codes. This position is fully funded through UC Davis Court Shelter Medicine Grant, received and is limited for two-year term. Out of all the amazing applicants, we are so grateful to find Sam, who is the perfect candidate for this selfless position. So without further hesitation, I will let Sam introduce herself.
Good evening, Mayor Sander and councilmembers. I'm really honored to be here, and I'm especially honored to be a part of the Animal Services Assistance Program. It's really special, um, as a program, and I'm super impressed with the difference I've already seen it make in the community. For the past two years, I worked for El Dorado County Animal Services. And prior to that, I was a dog trainer who specialized in reactive and aggressive dogs. Um, I'm graduating this year with a bachelor's degree in sociology, and I'm studying to become a registered veterinary technician by the end of next year. Um, this combination of experience and education has really solidified that my calling is to help people and their pets live their best lives in spite of any challenges they might be facing. In what free time I have outside of work and school, you can find me riding motorcycles, exploring the backcountry with my two dogs, and most recently, swimming with sharks. And as scary as you might think some of those things are, I can promise you this experience is much more terrifying for me. Uh, in any case, I am really grateful to work for the city of Rancho Cordova and with such an amazing team. And I hope I can make a positive impact on people and their pets here. Thank you, guys.
Welcome, Sam.
That is great, thank you, Sam. We're gonna need a presentation on swimming with sharks, though. Uh, and let's see, Katrina, I think you've got a new employee introduction. Is Katrina there?
Yes, hello, I'm here.
Great.
Um, good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Katrina Kolvig, Administrative Assistant Two in the Public Works Department. Um, and it is my pleasure to introduce Elizabeth Hall, who has recently joined the Public Works Department as Administrative Assistant One. The whole team is excited to have her, and we look forward to her contributions to the city of Rancho Cordova. So please join me in welcoming Elizabeth.
Um, good evening, Governor Santner, or Mayor Sander. I'm nervous. Um, and councilmembers. Um, I'm excited to join the team here, um, as the Administrative Assistant One for the Public Works Department. Prior to joining the Public Works Team, I worked as a Recreation Coordinator for Cordova Park and Recreation Depart- um, District, um, Department. As a Rancho Cordova resident, I'm really excited about the idea of, um, contributing to the ongoing efforts to support and serve our community. Um, so thank you for the very warm welcome.
Wonderful, welcome.
Great. Well, for that, I'm pretty sure she deserves a raise, and it sounds like I do too, so. That was awesome. All right, uh, if there are no other presentations, we're gonna move on to public comment. This is item number six. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk, who's sitting up there on your left. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments for three minutes or less and to state their name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is privy to from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda, unless it can be demonstrated to be of emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. We'll start with Sarah Alzun. Following Sarah will be Fazia, close? Sarah, you'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Sarah Alzun, and I've been a Sacramento resident for over 30 years. I work here on Trade Center Drive, just around the corner from here. Been a civil servant for the last seven years. I'm not sure what I could possibly say during public comment that I haven't already. The senseless death, uh, deaths of 56 members of my families, fa- family funded by our tax dollars and weapons made in the state wasn't enough. Most of my family that was killed was younger than me. I'm not, I'm not going to forget that my government launched an international search of an open ocean for five billionaires on a submarine, but 2 million people in Gaza got 28 trucks and failed calls for ceasefires. I'm not going to forget that one in six Americans can't afford their utility bills. We have record homelessness here in Sacramento. Our local congressman that you work with have supported a bill to send more money and more aid to Israel. I'm not going to forget that my friend had to dress like a watermelon and play Star Wars music to grab your attention. Maybe sometime in the future, when this is all said and done, that we can see how we attribute it to crimes against humanity. But by then, it'll be all too late. It's too late for my family. As a local government, the least we can do is provide a sentiment in a symbolic ceasefire. We're not begging for the impossible, we're asking for the bare minimum. A non-binding ceasefire, a stand for human rights, and a US arms embargo. I believe that our tax dollars could be better funded. And the paradox of what I do for a living is make sure that California state employers are in compliance with their taxes. That's, that's what I do for a living. And, um, it, it breaks my heart that this money is attributed to, uh, the deaths of innocent people when there are so many people in need here. There's foster youth programs that are underfunded. We have record homelessness, and just so many things that, um, we can do to better serve our communities here. Thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Fozia Faruq, and I represent the Council on American Islamic Relations. The Rancho Cordova City Council has repeatedly stated that it does not engage in international policy and has no power over it. However, we respectfully disagree. This council has previously passed proclamations supporting Ukraine during the Russian invasion in 2022 and recognizing the Armenian genocide in 2021. These actions demonstrate that the council does engage in international matters, particularly when such issues resonate deeply within our local communities. The international community, including this city, cannot remain silent in the face of such suffering. The council's previous actions to support the people of Ukraine and Armenia during their times of crisis demonstrate that we, as a city, have both a voice and a responsibility when it comes to advocating for human rights and peace. In this instance, the call for a ceasefire is not just a political stance, it's a moral imperative to prevent further loss of life and to promote peace. Additionally, I've heard the argument that movements like BDS never work, aside from the case of South Africa. But we cannot dismiss that success so easily. The South African anti-apartheid movement was, in fact, a triumph of global solidarity and nonviolent resistance. It is precisely the type of action that led to meaningful change to disregard its significance in the context of Palestine today is to ignore the real potential for international pressure to end apartheid conditions that Palestinians have endured for over 75 years. The mayor has suggested community building events and encouraged reaching out to the Jewish community alongside faith leaders. While I appreciate the spirit of this suggestion, I want to stress that this issue transcends religious lines. Palestinians of all faiths, Muslims, Christians, and many others are suffering. This is not a religious conflict, it's a human rights crisis. We must approach this matter as one that affects universal human- that affects universal human dignity, not just a divide between specific faith groups, groups. The council has taken brave stands in the past on matters of international importance, and we encourage you to do the same now. A ceasefire is not just a request, it's a vital step toward preserving human life and advancing the cause of peace. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to further dialogue on this matter.
Next speaker is Helen Whalen. Following Helen will be Haroon Rashid.
Hello, I am Helen Whalen Bishaw, and I'm from the Tiffany area. Uh, I'm here tonight to inform the community, if you haven't received one of our flyers. My group, which is PAR, which is Protect the American River Association, is a, um, is part of the CERA, which is Save the American River Association. We have been active, or I have been active since 2018, when I first found out a developer from out of state wanted to develop an orchard, which sits 30 feet below Folsom Boulevard, to put in homes. My group PAR is here, uh, in the community and been very active since 2020, when the TruMark group came in and wanted to add housing. Each year, since we are a, a public nonprofit group, we do community activities. We attend functions, present, um, information on protection of the river. Each year, in September, early October, we have a, a Family Fall Festival. This year, our Family Fall Festival will be on Sunday, uh, September 29th, from noon to four. It is a free event for the public, and we have all sorts of groups there. It is a, um, an event to bring the public's attention to why the last piece of the American River that can't, that is privately owned can be, and is attempting to be developed, be preserved to save the ecological side of the American River. This event features, uh, activities for the children. We have, uh, I personally finance most of the children's events, and we, I brought in a puppet show, like we had last year. We have a, similar to a scavenger hunt, and children can win prizes. Um, we have rock painting, we have games that revolve around, um, pinecones, acorns, and the nuts that are in the forest. We will give tours on the 45-foot-wide easement that goes across the top portion of what used to be the Cassis Estates. We also have, uh, free food this year. So I'm asking the community, come out and support our group. First year we had this event, we had over 450 people attend. Each year, it's grown in strength, and we're trying to get the community awareness that protection of this vast piece of the American River is very important. It dates back to the Nisammen Tribe, uh, which were the Native Americans that were in the Rancho community as the first citizens. This piece of land is valuable, and by protecting this land, we can recognize the true people that started the, that lived in the area, the, what is now Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Next speaker is Haroon.
Dear mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers, and city manager. My name is Haroon Rashid. Uh, you can call me an activist, whatever it is. We are here again, back in this room, to express our deep concern on continued humanitarian suffering and scale of devastation in Gaza. We, as a US political establishment, continue to play a significant role in perpetrating the genocide by not only being complicit in these war crimes, but also providing Israel with more and more lethal weapons. I'm going to quote Reverend Munther Isaac, a prominent Palestinian Christian leader from Bethlehem. He was, visited, uh, New York City recently, and he delivered a speech on August 14th. So, most of the things, what I'm gonna say is, word by word, quote from him. Why I choose him is because he's not political, he's a church leader, and he comes from Christian faith. Quote, "US political establishment and American churches are saying Israel has the sacred duty to defend itself." And of course, we as Palestinians, he himself being a Palestinian, continue to wonder, do we ever get the right to defend ourselves? Or, and to defend our land? By the way, I say this, as, uh, Munther saying this, as someone who is deeply committed to creative, nonviolent resistance. But the question must be asked, why is it that when one group defends itself or commits violence, it is self-defense? When other people commit violence, it is terrorism? Again, this is the power of empire in dictating the terms. We must call this out, and of course, we'll continue to do this. We were told invasion of Iraq was just a war, but look at the catastrophe that followed there. And for those who use the just war theory, what you have, in a sense, done is that you have cau- you have created this killing, you have caused the killing of 16,000 people, 16,000 children, and more, and more in the name of justice. So what we are saying, in a sense, is that we approve this violence, we approve this injustice, and what you are even saying that we don't, we don't even care.
Please wrap up your comments.
So almost 12 months into this tragedy, and the crime against humanity, which continues to unfold right in front of our eyes, it is hard to imagine that we are unable to even take up a ceasefire resolution for a vote in the city council. Today, we have a representation from many, many, many faith groups, and people from different walks of life. And I'm hopeful that we will listen to them and consider the next steps towards a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Next speaker, Brahan.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Rehan Alvi, and I'm both a business owner and a property owner here in Rancho Cordova. I've had the privilege of being a part of this community for many years, watching it grow, and contributing in my own way to its development and prosperity. Tonight, I come before you not as a business owner, but as a member of this community who deeply cares about peace and human life. And I'm humbly asking you to consider passing a resolution in support of a ceasefire in Gaza. I understand that what is happening overseas may feel distant to us here in Rancho Cordova, but the human suffering and loss of life in Gaza are very real and are having profound impacts on people all around the world, including right here in our community. This isn't just a global issue, it's a human issue. And as a city known for its strong values of community, we can and we should play a meaningful role in advocating for peace. Thousands of innocent civilians have lost their lives in this genocide, including far too many children. Homes, schools, churches, mosques, and hospitals have all been destroyed. Families are being torn apart, and for what? The humanitarian toll is immense, and the suffering is unimaginable. These aren't statistics, these are real people whose lives are being devastated. As a global community, and especially as residents of a city that values compassion and justice, we can't just turn away. And as Americans, we can and should do better. A ceasefire, it's not a solution to every complex issue at hand, but it is a necessary step to stop the immediate violence. It allows for humanitarian aid to reach those in desperate need and creates the opportunity for diplomacy and peaceful resolution. And it gives hope. It gives hope to people who are suffering. It gives hope to people who are crying out just for an end to all of this bloodshed. As someone who does business and owns multiple properties here in Rancho Cordova, I'm deeply invested in the well-being of our community. Believe me, I know that Rancho Cordova is a place where people look out for one another, where we care about our neighbors, and we stand up for what is right. And supporting a ceasefire resolution, it aligns with those values. It shows that our city stands for the protection of innocent lives, for justice, and for peace. I'm not asking for political alignment or for the council to do something radical or controversial. I'm just asking that we, as a city, recognize the human cost of war and make a statement that Rancho Cordova values peace and the sanctity of life. By passing a resolution in support of a ceasefire, Rancho Cordova can join the voices of other communities that are calling for an end to this bloodshed. Folsom, Sacramento, Elk Grove. It would send a message that we believe in peace and justice, not just here at home, but across the world.
Please wrap up your comments.
I'm just humbly asking for your thoughtful consideration. I thank you for your time and consideration to this matter. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Khalil Shinwari. Following him will be Shumuna Ali.
Hello, uh, respected mayor, uh, vice mayor, and the members of this council. Uh, my name is Mohammed Khalil Shinwari, and I have a business on, uh, Folsom Boulevard, located at 10145 Folsom Boulevard. It is a grocery and restaurant. I started this business last year in, uh, February. And according to a code of the city, I cannot sell the dairy products and, uh, fresh products. And, uh, for, for this reason, um, I'm not doing a good business. And I came to the city, to the city department, and they said, um, go and put your comment in the public comments in the city council. And they, if they want, they can revise or change the code for the bitterness of your business. I invest, uh, more than $300,000 there. And, uh, because of this bending, uh, the code, that I cannot sell, uh, two departments or three, like dairy and fresh products, it, um, uh, it's a big damage to my business. And I respectfully want you guys to revise or change this code to my business to be more bitter, and I can pay more and bitter tax to the government. Thank you so much for listening.
Sir, sir, surely quick, yeah, Russ. Sir, you, you wanna talk to that guy with the tie right there? Thanks.
Next speaker, Jumana, Juman- day, close? Ali.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city councilmembers of Rancho Cordova. My name is Jumana Ali, and I'm here as a community member. I urge you to take immediate action and call for a ceasefire in Gaza. This is not just an international issue. It is a humanitarian crisis and that profoundly affects our community, especially our Palestinian neighbors and who are dealing with the emotional and mental toll of this conflict. According to the United Nations, over 40,000 Palestinian lives have been lost as of August, with 130 people being killed daily, most of them being women and children. These are not just numbers, they are lives, families, and communities being destroyed. Every day without action just means more innocent lives lost. Peace abroad directly impacts peace here at home. The ongoing violence in Gaza resonates within our city, causing fear and worry among those who are, who are worried for their loved ones abroad. Neighboring cities like Sacramento, Elk Grove, and Folsom have already called for an immediate ceasefire. Rancho Cordova has the opportunity to stand with them for peace, for justice, and for the protection of human rights. I urge you to call for an immediate ceasefire, showing that our city values all lives and stands with those affected by the crisis. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Abdul Aleem Mohammed.
Good evening, dear mayor and, uh, dear vice mayor. Actually, uh, I came here for, uh, urging for a ceasefire, uh, in Palestine, because, uh, in Gaza, because the violence in one place, uh, uh, it always spreads, unfortunately, that's the reality. So the people who are watching those kind of things, they are, they are probably very emotionally, and then our neighbors and whoever around us may be, uh, affected a lot. So, um, uh, our tax money is actually funding, uh, for some other countries, uh, um, you know, violence, uh, and then, uh, in some other, uh, on some other people. It may not, it may look like, uh, it is not affected, uh, it is not related to us, but, uh, it is definitely, it will have impact because, uh, emotional trauma would, uh, would impact everywhere. So, um, hence I request, uh, our council, um, our city council to, uh, to, uh, for a ceasefire and stop the war. And that's all. Thank you.
Next speaker is Faisa Mughal.
Hi, I'm Faisa Mughal from Lincoln Village. Uh, and I'm here tonight to ask that the city of Rancho Cordova stand on the right side of history. You have the opportunity to do that. We want you to stand in solidarity with Rancho Cordovans who would like to see a resolution passed in favor of a ceasefire in Gaza. And I know we've had the political will, the guts and the fortitude to do things like that in the past. For example, March twenty twenty one, a resolution condemning racism, xenophobia and intolerance against Asian Americans and promoting inclusion and belonging of people of all races was pushed forth by the city council. April twenty twenty one, a resolution recognizing the independence of the Republic of Artsakh, which is between Armenia and Azerbaijan. February twenty twenty two, bit of a fail with the anti-black racism resolution, which was unanimously um, approved to, a motion was put forth to work on that, it never came to fruition, but we had the guts and the will to try it. March twenty twenty two, a resolution expressing support and solidarity with the people of Ukraine. So what are we waiting for? Let's do this. Thank you.
Mayor Sander, that's all the public comment that we have.
Mayor Sander, you're on mute.
There we go. Thank you all very much. That was item number six. We're now going to move on to item number seven, uh, council member reports. Looks like Mr. Gatewood is not there, so Ms. Budge, you are up.
Thank you, David. Um, well, I have to say, um, a lot of us had a really good time celebrating the twentieth anniversary of Folsom Lake College. Um, somehow or other, they managed to invite Jay Leno to come and speak. And he entertained everybody for at least an hour, maybe longer. It was really quite, quite fascinating. The room was jam packed. Everybody had a great time. Um, congratulations to the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. David and I had a super time on Saturday handing out all those awards, and I know that David will talk more about that. And I would ask that we adjourn tonight in memory of a, uh, an amazing, very um, groundbreaking woman, Ila Collins. She was on the county board of supervisors for at least twenty years, if not longer. And um, um, I knew Ila quite well. She was one of the people that I met when I was um, much younger and doing volunteer work out at Channel Six. And um, ultimately, when we incorporated and she asked me to be her representative to the library authority, Garrett, I'm sorry, Garrett's not here, he'll appreciate this. I didn't realize that being her alternate at the library authority meant that I was supposed to go. Alternate says, you know, when that person can't go, but no, she meant for me to go. So I did, and I enjoyed it thoroughly. And ultimately in um, two thousand and seven, when we redid the JPA that is the library authority, then um, then I represented us at the library for quite some time. And um, bless her heart, for eighteen years, she appointed me to chair the subdivision review committee at Sacramento County. Um, approving all the parcel maps and hearing all the subdivision maps as they went to the planning commission and the board of supervisors. So Ila Collins, she was a, an amazing woman of many interests, um, supported Native American culture. Um, interestingly, would not get on an airplane, so every time we went somewhere, she took the train. And uh, it would take her a little bit longer, but she and her husband Don, her late husband Don, would uh, show up in Washington DC and wherever it was we were supposed to be um, by riding the train. And so I would ask that we adjourn in her memory tonight.
Very good, thank you.
We also have a park just outside, outside of city limits, right? Isn't the um, where you can fly drones and stuff is right there next to Mather.
Oh, is that name for Ila?
There's a sign right there, it says Ila Collins, something or other.
It was, it was.
Oh, it might be.
No, it was Gene, uh, Gene Andel, who was the um, director of the county parks, uh, department for a long time. Gene Andel Regional Park.
There's a sign just, just north of Douglas, northeast. And then, yeah, east of Sunrise or Zimfandot right there. I'll take a picture of it.
Take a picture.
All right, uh, Mr. Terry, you are up.
Well, I will say I was under the weather a bit for the last two weeks, so I missed a handful of events. As the board treasurer of the Los Rios Colleges Foundation, I'm glad to hear that a whole bunch of people from Rancho Cordova and from the city government got to go. I had really good tickets and I sat at home and kept my germs to myself and missed that, but um, it was a great opportunity to, to celebrate the twentieth anniversary of Folsom Lake College. Um, and also to recognize, um, I'm not sure how many other cities were sponsors of that event, but um, our tremendous work that we've done over the last almost decade with Folsom Lake College in our promise program. And, and again, as the treasurer of that, of the, of the, the foundation, I will say, we are still the single largest government check or sponsor that they get each year into that, into that fund. So it's, it's really exciting to look at where that has come and as a, somebody who's a big Jay Leno fan, I really wanted to be at that event. And I knew before they told the public that he was going to be the one there. Um, and I hit up our city manager to make sure that we had tickets. And, and I think the other thing I would point out is it was one of the first events like that, just like a ticketed event that wasn't a dinner, like fill a table, where most of the council wanted to go. Um, so glad, glad folks enjoyed it. Um, I did attend this past weekend, right? I think it was this past weekend. Uh, or maybe it was the week before. Uh, the Sacramento Children's Museum had what is now our, 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 yeah, our, our quasi-largest fundraising event, although we're, we're working on bringing back something different. But um, the butterfly event was over the past weekend, or no, I'm sorry, on the eighth. Um, so the weekend before, so I was still getting over my cold, but it was an outdoor event and I was able to stay away from people. Um, but they release butterflies over here that you can purchase and they give you these little boxes that you got to warm them up and then everybody releases them together. And it's in honor of grandparents' day. And so um, the first time I got to attend, I think it was the first time we did it, was actually the year my mom passed away. Um, and so it's been an annual thing that we've been able to do as a family. So um, want to thank everybody that attended. The city was prominently sponsored there because we're, we sponsor everything because they're our tenant too. Um, I think I mentioned, I'm also the board chair of the organization. So uh, do you want to thank staff and everybody who worked on that? And beyond that, um, I'm, well, I attended the GSAC board meeting, but I'm not actually on the board because of my city council role, but David is. So I did have that meeting as well, um, but not, not much to report there.
You can report on my report.
Yeah, right. I was, I was in a conference and listening to that one, so I.
Okay.
I was, I was double dutying while listening to a speaker, listening to Barry and everybody talk about the finances of the organization, but yeah, that's it.
All right, thanks, Donald. Uh, Ms. Pulopati.
Thank you. Um, with council member Terry and I, we attended the two by two for the Elk Grove School District. We discussed the transportation related updates, uh, which is a big deal for all of the kids that are traveling about an hour to Elk Grove, all the way from Rancho Cordova. Um, they, we talked about the new speed bumps, the student drop off and pickup, additional signage to improve the traffic zones. Um, and also they talked about the measure N bond that is going to be on the ballot this um, election cycle, which is a funding for improving facilities. And uh, probably a new middle and high school to Southern Rancho Cordova. I, and an elementary school. Um, council member, uh, Budge and I attended the Folsom Lake twentieth anniversary event. It was a wonderful event. Uh, I also am a very big fan of Jay Leno. And I was actually bummed that, given that we were the biggest sponsor, we did not get to take a picture with him. Um, but he was really funny.
Might not have been the biggest sponsor as like, you know, but you know, we're a healthy sponsor for.
I was going to say, I, I'm not sure how they did, but we didn't sponsor it, at, at what they were asking was taught, let's put it that way.
But it was, it was really a, a dream come true watching him, given that when I was in college, I would watch him every night and seeing him in real life was very nice. Um, I did attend a grandparents' day event that was at the Mather Park. And this is a really wonderful event and a meaningful occasion to celebrate um, heritage and um, how grandparents play a vital role in our families and communities. Uh, also wanted to take a quick minute to update that I am part of the NLC IT committee. And as part of the working group, we worked on the resolution that calls on Congress and federal government to establish a framework for AI technologies. Uh, we know that AI is a buzzword, but we are working to make strong language while safeguarding the local decision making, uh, digital privacy and security um, for the region. This, or the resolution also calls for requiring um, the technology vendors to provide full transparency on their training data sources and their use of AI tools. I also want to thank um, an event that I didn't attend when it was happening, which was um, the Cordova Community Council Event on September eleventh. It was a, a really good event that acknowledged what happened and um, the remembrance that they have, we have displayed in the city hall was, is a really heartwarming event. Um, I, I couldn't attend because I was subbing. The alternate for uh, Mayor Sander at the sewage uh, meeting downtown. Sewer, I think. And that's my event, thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. You can just refer to it as Sac Sewer.
Sac Sewer.
Probably the simplest way. There used to be two agencies, they used to be part of the county, now they're becoming separate and merging into a new entity, so it's pretty exciting, actually.
Yeah, and one of the topics that they did talk about is how they were, um, the county and the sewer department wanted to share the IT resources.
Yeah, so all, it's interesting because.
So now they're re-merging from their unmerging?
All the things we had to do as a city, you know, to separate ourselves from the county, um, that district is kind of going through the same things, step by step, so.
Well, hopefully they don't have revenue neutrality.
They do not. Uh, but it's been an interesting series of discussions with them, you know, about what our experience was versus what the current, uh, you know, staff leadership there is going through, so it's, it's pretty interesting. All right, in terms of uh, my council report, I'll first disclose, you know, I'm in um, Branson tonight. Uh, I'm addressing the Missouri League tomorrow. I think there's five more leagues I'm addressing over the next just almost four weeks, three and a half weeks. Uh, while I'm on this trip, I'll, I'll acknowledge there's a Notre Dame football game, kind of right in the middle of that series of uh, speeches that I give to state leagues. This is part of my duty as uh, president of the NLC. Notre Dame, that's because my, my son goes there and Donald wanted me to go to another game, so I thought I'd take him up on that. We did have a really big week last week in Rancho Cordova with the ninth annual sports, Rancho Cordova Sports Hall of Fame event in City Hall. This is the first, I think, big event to use the, the American River Rooms in their flipped confirmation. And Mike assured me we're only halfway through the remodel or something like that, but nonetheless, it was a great test run. That was a spectacular event. Uh, I'm glad we didn't count noses to find out how many people are actually in the room because it was packed and tons of energy. And I have to say, it was kicked off by our um, Cordova Lancers football team and our cheerleaders, leading a cheer and the Lancers standing on the side of the room with all of these alumni who had been there a generation or two generations before them. And we're honoring the alumni, but in reality, what we're doing is we're inspiring those kids. And it was just a, a magnificent thing to see. It not only celebrates, you know, past accomplishments, but it inspires future development of our youth. Um, and not just in athletics, primarily it's life skills that we're talking about, academic, academic um, skills. So really great event. I just want to thank everybody who was involved with that. Of course, the community council puts it on, RCA is technically in charge. So Shelley Blanchard and her crew, and now Jason Harper is the, as a um, director for RCA, really great work. Thanks for everything you guys do. And uh, Ken Rudolph was available again. He's one of our famous alums from Cordova. He was able to uh, to emcee it with, with me, sort of, I guess we're both kind of co-EMCs or something. But um, it was a great event and we have alumni stepping up to lead that part of RCA, so it's, it's really exciting. All right, we also had a great nine eleven event uh, on Wednesday and it was nicely attended. And I have gotten a lot of positive feedback about um, that event and the fact that the city of Rancho Cordova was able to host that. I think it was because the Cordova Community Council was sort of in the right place at the right time and knew of it and was able to get it for nine eleven. But it is specifically a touring nine eleven event and it honors um, specifically people who gave their lives that day in defense of others. And those who subsequently were, were engaged in the World War on Terror um, around the world. And there are, there was at least one Rancho Cordovan who was uh, who was listed up there among the three thousand or so, maybe it was thirty six hundred individuals whose profiles appeared on the display in front of city hall. We also had a lot of our um, veterans in Rancho Cordova sort of standing watch over it, uh, talking to people who were coming through to look at it. I was at city hall every day last week and I never arrived or departed without seeing, um, seeing people viewing that exhibit. It also, you know, garnered a lot of attention to local media, so um, I think it's nice to have Rancho Cordova sort of in that framing for the region. The uh, GSAC board met last week and it was sort of a uh, debrief in part on our Korean trip. And so I gave that report. Um, others, Mike Kozlowski, Mayor Folsom gave a report for his aspect of it, as did uh, of course, Barry Broome. It's still, all signals go in terms of looking for additional partnership opportunity. And I will tell council, there is talk about a visits from uh, from our partners in Korea, from SK Hines in particular. Um, we don't know dates for that, but we anticipate it, so don't be surprised if things start showing up in your calendar or we're checking you for availability. Uh, Linda and I, you went to the, you and I went to the Folsom Curve Unified Two by Two on, I think it was last Monday.
We did.
A week ago.
Yeah, we did.
Uh, great discussion with the new superintendent. He laid out as a priority, uh, literacy and interestingly, he wasn't necessarily talking about the literacy by grade three, which is sort of a, a rubric I've seen referred to before. In order to measure educational success, he was talking about um, literacy and literacy skills for kids arriving in kindergarten. And framing his focus at the school district as possibly being literally working to make sure kids are up to speed before they get to kindergarten, so as they arrive to kindergarten. Otherwise, if they're behind at that point, they tend to stay behind and the gap widens. So I know that is a challenge for Rancho Cordova. We've actually done a few projects uh, through Measure H and R on that, on that topic. But I think we have an opportunity here to figure out what the big strategy is and, and lay into it with the school district. So um, I'm looking forward to more work there. Micah, you were there as well and Linda, I don't know if he gave us a timeline for what he might get back to us with that strategy. He just sort of gave us notice that that's what he was, that's the direction he's headed towards. And that is my report. So nobody has anything to add? Micah, city manager report.
Sure, I, I, I didn't hear a timeline for that report back from, um, from the superintendent, but I think we are in pretty constant communication. And I know it's something is initiative of his and when he's kind of, I think, laid that out, I think we'll hear from proposals and things of what that may look like. Um, a couple of updates on my end, a few. Uh, on the Los Rios side, I think one of the things we are expecting them uh, next month to come and give a report on the Los Rios Foundation and our Promise Program. So good timing of, of kind of celebrating the twentieth year um, as part of the Los Rios Foundation. But also, uh, we expect to hear from uh, the president, Pimental and folks um, and next month about the success and the future use of our Promise Program, which is great. Uh, the uh, kind of staying on the uh, celebration of the Hall of Fame side, uh, we are participating in the reminder, the Rancho Cordova, the Cordova Homecoming is uh, in a couple of weeks here um, on September twenty seventh. And so uh, we are gathering a, a city staff uh, participation in that game and, and attending and supporting the community. Um, and also, also inviting council to participate in that as well. Um, so we expect a good turnout supporting. in that as well, so we expect a good turnout supporting the Cordova Lancers on their homecoming on the 27th, so the team kind of puts that together on their own, and the staff team does, and really excited about participating in that community event there.
So I talked to the coach Friday, Saturday night at the, our awards night, because this is like the second or third year that, that we have not been allowed to drive the kids around the, you know, the, the court, the, all the, all the different grades courts around the track to receive their awards, and we talked about the possibilities of, like, doing a short parade down Coloma Road, or I think, Micah, you said we have golf carts, we could, maybe we could drive the kids in on the golf carts, whatever, but I think we need to go back to, to the coach and to Krieger to figure something out.
I do believe our RCA team is pretty involved in all of the kind of football game activities, and so I think they're pretty plugged in, so we'll make sure to coordinate with Jason and what's happening there on the RCA side.
Great.
Decorated golf carts might be the answer, I think they're worried about cars damaging the track, the track surfaces there.
I know, and, and we've always gotten lessons on how to drive, and of course, I'm one of the few people that's got a convertible, but, and actually, but I'm also remembering that Officer Tracy had an extremely decorated golf cart, so maybe, maybe a golf cart decorating contest could be part of it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I was gonna say, don't we still own that golf cart?
I don't know.
We have a couple.
I would say it wasn't Tracy's, it was ours.
Yeah, but she drove it. David Garrett arrived.
Aha, Micah, are you complete with your?
No, a few more, few more items, and maybe we'll get the Councilmember Gatewood for his report, but the, wanted to announce that we did release availability for artists to submit on our Zenfidel Crossing Project, so looking for good artists, talented artists to submit for our new Zenfidel Crossing pedestrian bridge that is moving forward, so we look forward to that. And then really wanted to highlight some success of our, our team around grants lately, and so I think we've had around three million dollars, a little under three million worth of grants that we've received lately, and usually around Folsom Boulevard Specific Plan, EV vehicle charging stations, sustainable transportation programs, and then Traffic Safety Action Plan. So I think what the importance of some of these, these different efforts are, it actually leads to actual real construction projects, so getting additional funds to do the plans that will then give us the ability to go after additional construction projects for both state and federal resources, so really want to congratulate the team on all the good success they've had lately on getting additional funding for the city of Ranch of Cordova, so. With that, I think I only have one other congratulations, and as for our Economic Development Team, Amanda Norton is, I think, in Denver right now at the International Economic Development Conference, picking up an award for the efforts around the Beryl District, and really, it's around actually a sustainable, multi, multi-year program, so it's not just a one and done, but it's a reward for actually sustaining a pretty successful effort over a period of time, and so really congratulations to the Economic Development Team for Amanda and folks coming back with some hardware from the conference that she's at right now, so with that, that's my updates, thank you.
Excellent, that's a big one. Garrett, Mr. Gatewood, you are up for a report.
Don't have a lot going on, met with the people from FIRE, there's a lot of interesting things going on right now that we will discuss in a couple of months about what's going on to protect us, they've been doing a lot of things on bringing in extra trucks and intelligent and educating new people, and we're trying to figure out a way, possibly the first ever Ranch of Cordova Fire Goats with hats, to take care of the fire problems we've been having, so I'm very excited about that potential opportunity, don't be sad, it's gonna happen. The other thing is, congratulations of Ranch of Cordova's rec soccer team, just spanking everybody all over, Keaton scored a goal and then knocked three people down, he's a beast, beast out there, and then we won, so that's all that matters, that's all I got, thank you.
All right, that sounds remarkably similar to my report about, I don't know, six years ago, seven years ago, when we had a similar soccer team wreaking similar carnage around the region, we had to apologize all the time to our colleagues and outgrow Citrus Heights, Folsom. All right.
I apologize and admit to nothing.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna carry on with the consent calendar. Item number nine, consent calendar items, consent matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. So these are items number nine point one through nine point two, are there any items the council wishes to have pulled? Pulled?
We do not have any public comment.
Move the calendar.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. All right, that was consent calendar items, now we're moving on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items, consent of matter deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I am going to open the public hearing on item, our only item, which is ten point one. Are there any public comments on item ten one?
There is no public comment for item ten point one.
Okay, anybody in the room? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Move the item.
Motion.
Move the item.
Say.
Okay, roll call, please.
Was that Councilmember Budge for the second?
Yes, he was.
Okay, Councilmember Budge, all right, roll call, Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. All right, that brings us to item unanimous vote, that brings item number eleven, public hearing items, of which there are none, and then item twelve, regular calendar items, and twelve point one, if the clerk would read the title of that item, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ranch of Cordova, State of California, repealing sections nine point eight five point zero one zero through nine point eight five point zero six zero, protection of critical infrastructure and wildfire risk areas, and adding sections nine point eight five point zero one zero through nine point eight five point zero seven zero to Title Nine, Chapter nine point eight five of the Ranch of Cordova Municipal Code Camping.
All right, well, somebody owes Stacy a little money for getting through that, I don't know if it's Russ or Adam, but whoever's responsible for that title, and with that, I'm gonna hand this off for a staff report from Russ Ducharme, Russ.
Well, thank you, Mayor Sander and council members, Russ Ducharme, Neighborhood Services Manager here tonight with our Police Chief Matt Tamayo to present this item. So our goals tonight are just to go over some background on recent case law surrounding illegal camping, discuss the new ordinance, and then provide a recommendation. So first, some perspective, back in 2018, there was some case law that came out, Boise versus Martin, for the United States Court of Appeals in the Ninth Circuit that held the Eighth Amendment prohibits the imposition of criminal penalties for sitting, sleeping, or lying outside on public property for homeless individuals who cannot obtain shelter. The ruling here held that the cities cannot enforce anti-camping ordinances if they do not have enough homeless shelter beds available for their homeless population, it did not necessarily mean that the city cannot enforce any restrictions on camping on public property. The challenge here is that we coordinate heavily with the county and a lot of the, the services through shelters, and the kind of tracking of these beds gets to be a little difficult. So then we move to 2019 through COVID, and the California Department of Public Health State Guidance and the Sacramento County Health Officer, excuse me, Order, where we were told not to break up camps and, and didn't want to break up pods of people and allowed folks to live in RVs and vehicles, however, the health order did provide some latitude on enforcing illegal camping around critical infrastructure and wildfire risk areas, provided that we adopted an ordinance designating those critical infrastructures within the city.
So in 2022, this is Chief Tamayo, if you can't see me, good evening, everybody. In 2022, the City of Ranch of Cordova adopted, or the City Council adopted the ordinance regarding the protection of critical infrastructure and wildfire risk areas. The ordinance was utilized when the ability to access or maintain an identified critical infrastructure facility was blocked, or a wildfire risk area was in danger of catching fire. This ordinance was rarely used, I think Russ and I spoke earlier in the week, and it was about six times in the last two years that we've actually used it. Our strategy prior to this ordinance being passed, and even after it was passed, was education-based, and we offered resources, and so that mitigated us using it most times because we would speak to the individuals that were contacted in these prohibited areas, offer services, explain and educate as to why they couldn't be there, and more often than not, the subjects would leave, either accept services, or they would move to a different area. In 2022, the city in Grants Pass in Oregon enacted multiple ordinances regarding camping on city property and subjected homeless individuals to civil fines followed by criminal penalties. Again, this was isolated in the city of Grants Pass. In that same year, 2022, the Ninth Circuit took up the question of whether Grants Pass was prohibited by the prior 2018 Martin v. Boise decision, enforcing these ordinances and question whether or not causing punitive damages and arresting somebody was in violation of that Boise order, and so they ruled that, oh, excuse me. So they, they, they ruled that, that it was in fact a violation, and that appellate decision was later heard in the Supreme Court regarding Johnson versus City of Grants Pass, Oregon, and in June of 2024, the United States Supreme Court overruled the prior Boise decision and the city, and the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision regarding the city of Grants Pass, and when they did overrule it, they gave some specific direction related to how their, their ruling could be applied, and so one of the major directions was they could enforce the action, but not the, the fact of being homeless, so they could enforce camping in public spaces, but they could not penalize somebody for simply being homeless. They also ruled that everybody's health and public safety was at stake in this decision, and they weren't just identifying a specific population. They also made note of the many supportive measures that multiple jurisdictions throughout the United States have enacted related to homelessness policy, specifically the holistic approach that the city of Ranch of Cordova has used pretty rigorously since at least 2018, if not before, wherein rather than issuing a citation and moving on, we offer services, it's a cooperative relationship between neighborhood services, the homelessness navigators, our crisis intervention team when applicable, and our county partners, and so through all those initiatives, we've been pretty successful locally in managing this complex problem, and it's a model that is being widely adopted, not only regionally, but throughout the country.
So our proposed ordinance is gonna replace the critical infrastructure ordinance to stay current with the most recent case laws, will have the same enforcement capabilities as the repealed ordinance when addressing critical infrastructures in wildfire risk areas, and the proposed ordinance provides clear definitions as it relates to camp, camping facilities, camping paraphernalia, storage, and storage of personal property. One of the modifications that we're proposing right now, based on some of the feedback that we received over the past day or so, would be to strike subsection B of nine point eight five point zero four zero, where we did propose to allow camping on the rear and side yards of a residential property, so we're, we're looking at, we're proposing to strike that subsection B. So with the recommendation, we are asking to waive the first reading of the ordinance and introduce a proposed ordinance repealing sections nine point eight five through nine point eight five zero six zero, adding sections nine point eight five point zero one zero through nine point eight five zero seven zero to Title Nine, Chapter nine point eight five of the municipal code titled Camping.
And I would just add, if I may, Mr. Mayor, two brief additions. The, the first is that in the last, in the last couple of months since the Grants Pass decision was, was enacted, there have been a number of jurisdictions that have essentially started enforcing Grants Pass immediately, and, and that's because some of those, rather than updating their codes as we did and updating their, their, they had left camp, anti-camping on the books essentially in the wake of Boise, so what we have done is, is more actively updated our ordinances as the case law has, has changed, or as the state direction has changed, and as other opportunities have availed themselves to us. So we, we fully support this change and think it will align well with what will be happening in, in the region, and certainly there have been a number of articles about that statewide. And second, a comment would be with respect to the, the limited language we had for camping in people's backyards, the, the initial thinking was simply we were seeing some other jurisdictions being clear that if, if a parents and their kids want to go spend the night outside because it's a, a nice night, that's, that's not, that's not what we're talking about when we're regulating and concerned with camping more broadly, but on reflection, we're absolutely fine with just eliminating that. Code in general has a, a less, a, a less active enforcement relationship to things that are in backyards, and there are other tools that we have available to the city if, if things in somebody's backyard were to get out of hand, there would likely be other violations and issues as well.
So just to be clear, it's not necessary to continue this for a revised ordinance to come back, we just agree to?
It, it is not, the language is very identifiable, we'll just introduce it without that exception. The proposed staff recommendation is to introduce it without that exception.
So just so we're, just so we're clear, as, as originally proposed by staff, there would be a regulatory structure sort of to backyard camping, limited to a certain number of nights, et cetera, but if you strike that, then you have no direct control over it, but you think that any impact that it would cause that would bother neighbors would be enforceable under another portion of our code?
Yes, it would, it would technically not be allowed, but it isn't the kind of thing that tends to provoke enforcement complaints or action.
Yeah, okay, technically not allowed at all, but would not spark enforcement, obviously, unless there were complaints and enforceable issues.
And, and it's certainly something that, you know, if it did raise an issue, we could come back easily with an update to the ordinance to add that in with a little bit more structure and, and outreach around that issue.
Okay, are there council questions at this point?
The one question I have on public property that is set aside, do we have any exceptions if you get a lot of resident feedback that they are not comfortable with that particular public property?
Maybe the question is probably, do we have public property that is allowed for camping right now, and where would that be, but most public property within the city of Ranch of Cordova doesn't allow camping on it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the county lands and the park district lands, I don't think either one allows camping unless a special permanent event is happening.
This one says, on public property, set aside and clearly marked for public camping purposes.
We don't, we don't have any spaces like that.
Okay.
There is in Riverbend Park, there's something that used to be, Linda, was it referred to as the Girl Scouts Camp, and then the Rotary fixed it up?
Oh, it was Campfire Girls.
Campfire Girls, that's what it was originally.
Campfire Girls, on the, on the east side, adjacent to Solborne.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's an over, if they use that for overnight, or if that is solely a day camp kind of a place, but.
There have been day camps out there in the past.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure. My kids are not day camp age anymore. My kids are not day camp age anymore.
Yeah, if memory serves, the language that you're referring to, I think, was put in there in case we chose to have a designated place at some point. That one council member did ask in the past to do. So if there was a designated place and if it was clearly signed and everything like that, then you could, but to date, we've never done that, right?
That helps, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I was with Rotary, and we did a cleanup at the campsite on Riverbend that, that the mayor's referring to. They do, do regular maintenance out there.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes.
I know we've received some emails.
Yes, we'll start with James Garcia. James, if you'll come forward. Following James will be Helen Wayland-Bishaw.
Good evening, Council. James Garcia, resident Stone Creek. As an Eagle Scout, we had a rule, leave no trace and try to find it actually better than you found it. As I'm just hearing, I'm happy to hear that there is no specific designated place right now within the city limits to allow camping on public land because it required permits, it required insurance, and that's something that we clearly do not want to be able to have for, because again, we're not trying to target any one group. We are trying to actually make a nice, safe, livable place here. So wanted to know if there was actually any new zoning process that would allow that camping to take place? Would there be public comment as Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor, sorry, mentioned about that? Because that is something that people would want to hear. Open spaces right now near schools, would that create a problem with like possible Megan's Law issues? So we don't want to have that as a potential location because of restriction to minors. Homeowners would be at risk of possibly losing their homeowners insurance policy if you were to allow this because drones could be flown over, you could see the fact that there's unkept yards, anything else. People are losing their policies right now. It may also even cancel their policy for allowing camping unless it is your family. So that's something to look at if you would actually legally allow it. Requiring consent of the owner or occupant may not be good enough because, again, we have squatters already that have come forth on abandoned homes in the past or become backyards of junkyards. We're also, are we going to start profiling or following our potential people for camping to track that four-day period? That would have been a bad thing to happen because we would have too much enforcement issues to be able to have our Neighborhood Services or anybody else, code enforcement or law enforcement. If, the fact that you now have, are striking the residential portion, there is no set limit to the number of days. Are we going to allow unlimited in the future? Because this now does not have a specific limitation to days. Also, have you ever seen the aftermath of a burning man? The desert was not taken care of, trash as far as the eye can see. Festivals can take days for events to even end and clear out. Let's see. Only proper locations for legalizing camping within city limits would be like a KOA or another organization that can install shower, restroom facilities, fencing to prevent visibility from the streets, and have other proper sanitation in place. They would also be contributing to the financial improvement of the city by charging fees and paying taxes. That would be the only proper location to really do this. Let's see. Again, with the violation process of only being fines and not potential removal until a third violation, it's clearly not, doesn't have enough teeth in it. You're giving a fine to somebody but not forcibly removing them if they are in violation of this.
Please wrap up your comments.
Yep. Let's see, one last thing. Would Capital Village Park be the greatest place? Because the Village Green area become one of the locations approved for camping within the city would create issues within events that host there if somebody were to legally be allowed to camp? So, thank you.
Helen Wayland-Bishaw?
Helen Wayland-Bishaw. My concern about the ordinance itself is I see when I drive from my residence and go up Folsom Boulevard, past Zinfandel, heading towards Sunrise, there is a lady that seems to spend an awful lot of time on the sidewalk camping out. Rancho has spent, or the state, whoever has, spent a lot of money putting in sidewalks that the city did not have 20 years ago. There are a lot of people who camp out on those sidewalks, thus making it uncomfortable for the residents to use those sidewalks. I want to know, I would like the city to maybe put something more in there because it is a public place and they do camp out. And my concern is where, what they're leaving behind, and there's no restrooms in the area and stuff, and a major cleanup of all the areas where the homeless have been has been the hazardous waste removal. So I would like the city to more, to address more of the homeless right to violate the citizens who are paying the taxes' rights to use the sidewalks that their taxes have paid for in some form as it is. Also regarding open land, going down Rod Bodre into Riverbend Park, citizens in the adjacent communities where there are green belts are actually paying taxes. They own property that they're easement rights over that preclude the residents from enjoying the property because they're not allowed to build fencing on it. It's not uncommon to see homeless sleeping off the levee into the sides. One of the residents in East Tiffany went to the extreme of removing all of her berry bushes and ivy because of the number of homeless people that encamped upon the land that's next to her house, where it is a public easement that says for horses and hiking on it. So I think the city needs to address some of the issues that I feel is shortcoming in that policy because you say you're addressing the people and offering them alternatives, but what do you do for the repeat people? Because I'm sure when you're finding these people, you're recording their name and information. If they're just moving around the city and they're not making any effort to use the city resources that are out there, what is the city doing about that? Thank you.
The additional speakers that we had for this item are Angel Ball and Jim Garcia. They both sent emails to the City Council and the City Clerk's Office. Those were distributed, placed on our city's website, and have been printed and placed on a binder in the back of the council chambers. We have somebody who just walked into the council chambers. Did you have a, did you want to comment on item 12.1?
Sorry. No.
Okay.
Six. Okay.
Okay. Staff, would you like to respond a little bit to resident concerns? I think there may be a little confusion, maybe it's with regard to the edit, but, I mean, in general, this, this ordinance update allows us to address the concerns which they were all raising. So, you know, if it's keeping a sidewalk clear, keeping an easement clear, or just allowing camping in, in public places, you know, as James mentioned, near schools, that's exactly what this is designed to do. So maybe we need a little more clarity on that.
Sure, let me, perhaps let me lead off, Mayor. First, this is an anti-camping ordinance. It's not a, in favor of camping ordinance. It's not a allow more camping ordinance. So I, in, in, second, it does focus on the act of camping. It doesn't make it, and the Supreme Court doesn't now allow us to make it illegal to be homeless or poor or fat or skinny. It doesn't make it illegal to be homeless in America. So we, it does make it illegal to roll out sleeping equipment and sleep. It doesn't make it illegal for somebody to take a nap in a park on a sunny day, having a picnic with their kids. But it does, it does focus on camping, and I think that it will give a valuable tool to allow code and police to keep the rights away and paths and other public spaces that our residents use and enjoy clean and, and free of, of homeless or unhoused people who have laid out beds and bedrolls and that sort of thing. We did take some extra care to make sure that, that the definition of camping was relatively broad and expansive, and both PD and code should have a tool that, that they are able to use, you know, quite actively when needed in conjunction with our other tools.
Yeah, you know, from my perspective, I would just add, you know, I think from a, there's a, there's a myriad of tools that our team uses, and I think we, we look at it from a compassionate, you know, enforcement standpoint, and we have to provide tools in order for our team to, when necessary, to use them, but we always offer different alternatives and services to the community as far as as needed. And so I think we do have a pretty active and proactive program and with, with our different options, with our code enforcement and the police department both moving forward. And I think this really is a tool in the many tools toolbox of both services, but also enforcement. And I think a lot of the concerns that you've seen addressed, actually, this helps us in dealing with some of those issues more specifically. And I think that's something that we, you know, kind of, and why we're actually recommending this approach and not using the critical infrastructure because it gets much broader on public property and our options to, to use these different programs.
And quite frankly, the Supreme Court decision really supports the way our police department, the way our hot team, the way the navigators have always approached the homeless issue. It is not illegal to be homeless. It is illegal to do illegal activities regardless of whether your, what your status is, like you said, homeless or fat and skinny, you know, whatever. Illegal is illegal, but not, homeless is not being illegal.
Well, and let's, let's talk about what this is and what this isn't. Because I think there's, there's a massive amount of interpretation here in, in reading a code that doesn't have a thing to do with it. So the reason that there, that there was wording like that was a member of this council at one point suggested having a legal place to camp to assist in the enforcement of sweeping camps in the Parkway and other places to say, you have to go there because we have space for you there. And I think we all agreed that if there was space, people would go there, fill it up, and then it wouldn't be used for the tool that it was intended to be. And I think we all agreed that, and we didn't move forward with it. So there is no designated place on public land anywhere in the city to do this. So whatever conspiracy theory anybody walked in here or sent us an email about, freaking out about, doesn't exist. There's the first part. Second part is, with the new ruling from the, from the court, we don't need that in order to do enforcement. So when you're sitting here saying, the city's going to do this, and we're going to have all these camping, the land doesn't exist for it. We were doing it for a very, or it was, I'm sure, we didn't do it. It was suggested as a strategy to help with enforcement for public safety and code to prevent camping in the Parkway and other places in the city. But because of the new ruling, you don't have to follow what the Boise rule said, that you actually have to have a space for them in order to enforce it. So everybody calm down, and let's pass the ordinance. And I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Staff, you have anything else you want to add to that discussion?
No, I don't. I just, I think one thing that I want to really kind of drive home is that our homeless outreach team is really leading with care and compassion, right? So it's been a staple of our, the hot team since we've kind of created it in, in 2018, and, and we, you know, like Micah said, it's, it's, these enforcement tools are kind of the last, kind of the last straw, right?
But when, but when you need them, you now have more tools than you did two months ago.
100%.
Right?
Yes.
So the, the needle we were trying to thread with this kind of wording, we don't need anymore.
Correct.
Because you have new tools.
Correct. And I think it's, it's also being progressive and staying in tune with what's happening. So appreciate it.
And Chief, I think we do still have a, like a repeat offender option with the district attorney and the sheriff. So if you are a, you know, like a 10x repeat offender, there are other alternatives other than just getting into the misdemeanor or fine?
Yeah, that's correct. And we have several people that we've contacted over the, last year that are currently in that program, so they're in custody right now. The initial custody session's 90 days, and during that time, they have the ability to take advantage of the various rehabilitation programs, job placement programs, housing programs, and should they be successful, their fines and penalties are taken away.
Right. Some people might label that as, you know, oh, you're being cruel, but I think the reality is that is their best shot at, at rehab. And I think Russ, you mentioned earlier that in particular, this is a, you know, a very service-resistant population. So there are real, real challenges to get people to take advantage of opportunities to get literally off the street. So sometimes we need other alternatives.
Yeah, I, I, David, I don't disagree with anything you said, except for the vast majority of the homeless population wants service and they want housing. The people that we're talking about are chronic homeless that have been homeless for more than three years or even more, that struggle from addiction, a lot of other things. And those are the people that have the high interactions with our police that we're talking about. But don't for one second believe that, that 90 some odd percent of the people that are homeless would like to not be homeless and want service. But the high priority is set for these chronically homeless people that are, that struggle for our public safety and our business parks and, and our residents.
All right. Any other discussion or anything else to add? All right. Let's vote. Roll call, please.
So we had a motion by Councilmember Terry, and we had a second by Councilmember Gatewood. Roll call. Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Polapotti?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Aye. Vote is unanimous. Okay, that was item 12.1. Item 13, request for future agenda items. Hearing none, I am going to move on to, if there's nothing else to come before us, I'm going to move to adjourn, and we are adjourning in memory of Isla Collin. She was a supervisor during the era in which we became a city. Thank you all very much.